Good morning. I'd like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Wednesday, September 18th. Welcome to everyone who's joining us. We have committee regrets from councillor Thompson and councillor Silivitz. First, we will include... Are there additional items to include? Pardon me? Council announcements are first. Who has council announcement? Councillor Xu.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, everyone. I'd like to thank everyone for joining my outdoor event last Sunday. And a big shout out to Mayor West and most of the councillors for your presence to make this event special. And I also want to express my sincere gratitude to two city staff, Riza and Susan, for the great assistance. And thank you to all dedicated community service organisations that showcase their services to our visitors. And I look forward to hosting more events in the future, as I believe bringing people together is a great way to serve our community. And your support means a lot. Thank you so much.
Thank you, councillor Tree.
Okay, thank you so much, Madam Chair. So last Saturday in city meeting room, we host our international Tai Chi and Wealthy events here. We have more than around 100 seniors came to our city hall to make the demonstration to celebrate international Tai Chi for wealth as well. Thank you so much for our Mayor West's support here as well. So we're looking for maybe future opportunities for promoting this type of the health movement in our community. Also, on Sunday, we host or sponsor one of the event for the Love Max, which is for the fundraising for autism programmes in our community. Especially, I see a lot of my neighbours' kids, they join this programme and they get the benefits from this fundraising event as well. Thank you so much for our Mayor, Mayor David West, Deputy Mayor Godwin Chan, and also our MPP Daisy Way show up to support this charity funding events. Thank you so much. That's all from me.
Thank you. Next, we have Regional Councillor Chad.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr Chair. Madam Chair, I'm sorry. I better have my cup of coffee first. It's, I think, almost most, if not all, of council members on Sunday for the Terry Fox Run. Maybe someone may want to say more to it. But it's certainly a great gathering in Madam Chair's ward in Oakridges Community Centre. Cancer can be beaten, and that's something that's good to see the committee gavenize for a really worthy cause for a long time. The other thing too is that yesterday, for those who celebrate, within the East Asian community, it's called Mid-Autumn Festival, somebody calling Moon Festival. In fact, some of us were attending the MPP local Daisy Way's celebration in the Ritual Centre Reforming Arts. So enjoy, it's supposed to be a day of celebrating, a day before, yesterday, and also today. So happy Mid-Autumn Moon Festival for those who celebrate. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Mayor West.
Well, thank you very much. It certainly was a very busy weekend, and I tended to see a lot of my council colleagues throughout the days, both Saturday and Sunday. Again, just quickly, thank you to Glamena Betancourt and councillor Silivitz, actually, for helping to put on the Terry Fox Run. I understand that they exceeded their goal, which was great. That's a wonderful event that happened in Oakridges. So good job on that. I also would like to just give a shout out to councillor Xu for putting on his event. It was excellent. I was able to showcase my enormous performance talents, doing dad jokes, and, you know, a couple of people laughed, which was nice. And also councillor Tree for the two events, actually, that he helped to put on and still had the time to be at a bunch of events in between. So thank you very much. I think it's important that council members are out there supporting all the different events that go on in our community. I think it sends a good message to our community that, you know, we certainly support the good work that members of the community are doing. And I also would just like to also just give a shout out to all folks in our community who are celebrating Moon Festival yesterday. I was able to go to a whole bunch of different events throughout the last month, or well, a couple of weeks at least, to celebrate that event, and it really was wonderful to see that in our community. I do think I have between now and Diwali to work off all the calories that I've had because of that event. So we'll look forward to that as well. Thanks very much.
Thank you. And next, we have Regional Councillor Dipola.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Yes, Mr Mayor, it definitely was a busy week, on top of all of those events that have been mentioned. I wanted to give a shout out to Glamena Betancourt and councillor Silivitz. And the fact that in Oakridges, that Terry Fox Run is now combined, it's Richmond Hill and Oakridges events, they raised a record amount. It was great to see the turnout there, along with councillor Xu's event and the Moon Festival and all the other things going on. There was also an award given out called Portraits of Giving that happens every year. It's the 15th annual event, and I was able to bring greetings on your behalf, Mr Mayor, and there are two very worthy honorees have been added now to a long list of community heroes that are being recognised for their giving. And that's a fabulous event. We also was a beautiful foundation gala that raised a lot of money, and that was for women escaping domestic violence. So great causes, lots going on, and it's good to see in this beautiful extended summer weather. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have introduction of emergency time-sensitive matters. Seeing none. Can we adopt the agenda, please? Thank you, councillor Tree. All those in favour? Thank you. That passes. Discussion of pecuniary interests and general nature thereof. Seeing none. Identification of items requiring separate discussion. Adoption... We've already adopted the agenda, is that right? Adoption of the remainder of the agenda. Do I have... Thank you. Deputy Mayor Chan. All those in favour? That passes. Thank you. I see no public hearings. Thank you. Our next is a presentation by Anna Hendricks, Manager of Development, Zoning, and Christie Kilburn, RE Millard and Associates regarding Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw Project. Hello, welcome. Over to you.
Good morning, Madam Chair and members of council. My name is Anna Hendrikis, and I am the Manager of Development, Zoning and Committee of Ajustment. And joining me this morning is a representative from the consultant firm retained by the city to undertake work on the Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw Project. Joining me is Christie Kilburn from RE Millward and Associates. So together, Christie and I will be delivering this morning's presentation on phase two of the Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw Project, which is the strategic directions phase. I also wanted to note that we are joined virtually by... Ian Graham, excuse me, also from RE Millward and Associates is joining us virtually from Vancouver. He is the project lead on the consultant team, and he is available to respond to any questions following the presentation if needed. Next slide, please. So I will begin today's presentation by providing some background information on the Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw Project, including key objectives, work completed to date, and the current status of the project. I'll then turn it over to Christie to provide an overview of the work completed by the consultant team on the phase two strategic direction reports. Christie will also provide an overview of the input we've received on the reports and how that input was used to inform updates to the strategic direction reports. And lastly, I will conclude the presentation by providing next steps on the project. Next slide, please. So before I provide some background info on the project itself, I thought it would be helpful to set the stage and provide some context on the current state of zoning in Richmond Hill today. So presently, there are approximately 40 different parent zoning bylaws that are currently in effect that apply to different geographic areas across the city. And these zoning bylaws do precisely what zoning bylaws are supposed to do, which is to regulate the types of uses that are permitted on a property, and also to regulate how and where development can take place. Now, many of the city's parent zoning bylaws are quite old and outdated, with many of the bylaws being enacted prior to the 1990s. And it is worth noting that the city's zoning information is not fully accessible and available online. So for example, the city's zoning mapping is available online in a PDF static format. However, most of the city's parent zoning bylaws, including all the associated amendments, are not available online. Next slide, please. The Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw Project was initiated by staff in 2018, and a key objective of the project is really to replace the 40-some-odd parent bylaws that are currently in effect with one new comprehensive zoning bylaw that applies across the city and implements the vision and policies of the official plan. Other key objectives of the project include creating a zoning bylaw that is user-friendly, easy to understand, easy to administer, and easy to enforce. We're also looking to update our zoning bylaws with new regulations and terms that are reflective of current and emerging planning and development trends and practices. And last but not least, we want to ensure that our zoning information is fully available and accessible online to improve service delivery, not only for our internal customers but external customers as well. Next slide, please. So there are four distinct phases to the project. Phase one is the background research phase, which is now complete. And really, the purpose of this phase was to undertake research and compile relevant data and information to inform work on phase two and three of the project. So for examples, part of the work completed in phase one, there were a number of technical papers that were prepared on a variety of different zoning issues, and those zoning papers are available on the Zone Richmond Hill webpage. Phase two of the project is the strategic directions phase, and that's presently where we're at today. I will provide more details on this phase in a moment. Phase three of the project is drafting of the bylaw itself, and phase four of the project is approval and appeals of the bylaw. Next slide, please. So as I said, we are presently in phase two of the project, which is the strategic directions phase. And today, we are seeking council endorsement of some key phase two documents. And ultimately, endorsement... Council endorsement of these documents will enable staff and the consultant team to move forward with phase three of the project, which is drafting of the Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw. Staff are specifically seeking council endorsement of four strategic directions reports, as well as the City of Richmond Hill Parking and Transportation Demand Management Strategy. And further details on the four strategic direction reports and the parking strategy will be provided later in this presentation. We're also seeking council endorsement of the consultation and engagement plan, and this plan ultimately provides a framework to facilitate meaningful opportunities for engagement and input as we start drafting the Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw. Next slide, please. So the purpose of phase two strategic directions phase is really to identify key recommendations to guide the drafting of the Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw. And these key recommendations will be outlined in a series of strategic direction reports. As mentioned earlier, the city has retained a consultant team to complete work on the Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw Project. This consultant team is led by RE Millward and Associates, and includes a number of subconsultants, including Friedman Urban Solutions, Code Studio, Hurdle Planning, and Laura Consulting. Next slide, please. So the consultant team has completed the first set of strategic direction reports. In total, there are four of them. And these strategic directions reports will guide the drafting of the first phase of the Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw. So Strategic Directions Report I provides key recommendations to guide the drafting of the bylaw as it relates to the overall framework and design, as well as phasing and implementation. Strategic Directions Report II provides recommendations to guide the drafting of the bylaw as it relates to the city's neighbourhood areas. Strategic Direction Report III provides recommendations as it relates to the Young Street and Carville 16th Avenue key development area, the Village Local Centre, the Oakridges Local Centre, and Newkirk Local Centre. And last but not least, Strategic Direction Report IV provides key recommendations to guide the zoning bylaw, drafting of the zoning bylaw as it relates to parking and loading. Next slide, please. On June 24th of this year, we held a public open house to obtain input on the draft strategic direction reports that have been prepared. These reports were made available on the Zone Richmond Hill webpage prior to the open house, and we did receive comments from interested parties and members of the public between June 11th and July 5th. And a summary of that feedback that we received is outlined in the consultation summary report prepared by Laura Consulting, which is attached to the staff report. Next slide, please. And now I'd like to turn it over to Christie. She will provide an overview of each of the strategic direction reports and advise how the input received is informed updates. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. Good morning, Mayor West, members of council, staff and members of the public. I'm joined here today by my colleague and director, Ian Graham, who is joining online, who will also chime in to answer any questions after the presentation at the appropriate time as needed. As Anna mentioned, I will be providing an overview of the four strategic directions reports and their recommendations. Based on public input, we have made a number of updates to the recommendations that were put forward at the public meeting, predominantly to provide greater clarification and address matters raised by the public. The intent of the strategic direction report recommendations are to provide general guidance, which will help to inform the drafting of the bylaw. So Strategic Directions Report number one addressed the zoning bylaw framework, design, phasing, and implementation. And key recommendations contained within that report included drafting the zoning bylaw in phases, with the first phase being zoning for neighbourhoods and the Leslie Street institutional area, as well as, as Anna mentioned, the one Young Street and Carville 16th key development area, as well as the three local centres as well, with the second phase being zoning for the balance of the city's lands, such as centres and corridors, employment areas, the city's greenway system as well, at such time as the official plan updates are brought forward for those areas of the city. Next slide, please. Key recommendations also included establishing a bylaw structure organised based on three parts, part one being the main zoning bylaw regulations, part two being site-specific zoning exceptions, and part three, the maps and schedules which accompany that. As part of this exercise, it's recommended that staff and the consulting team will evaluate site and area-specific bylaws to determine whether they should be deleted, amended, or carried forward in the Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw. Next slide, please. While no specific input was received as it relates to this particular strategic directions report during the consultation period, we did make a couple of updates to this report and the recommendations to address comments received on the other strategic directions reports, which were of a more general nature pertaining to the bylaw. This includes a new recommendation indicating that properties subject to Ontario Land Tribunal appeals will not be part of the Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw until such time as the appeals are resolved. Also, a recommendation regarding the use of holding zones and provisions to ensure appropriate phasing of development and that adequate services are in place prior to development. Next slide, please. For Strategic Directions Report number two, which addressed zoning for the city's neighbourhoods, key recommendations include consolidating the numerous existing residential zones into fewer array of zones, examining appropriate locations along arterial streets for low-rise, medium-density housing as of right permissions, and this is in accordance with the city's official plan, as well as permitting non-residential uses that are appropriate and compatible with neighbourhood areas, again, in accordance with the official plan. Next slide, please. Additional key recommendations for the city's neighbourhood areas includes establishing low- and medium-density zones to permit a range of different dwelling types with appropriate built form regulations, aligning as closely as possible with the existing character of different areas within the city, permitting live-work units in certain locations and home occupations in accordance with official plan policies, permitting short-term rental accommodations subject to certain requirements, regulating things like parking of commercial motor vehicles in neighbourhood areas, front yard parking, accessory structures, and so on. Next slide, please. Input received during the consultation period at both the public open house that was held, as well as written submissions, include comments related to neighbourhood character and preservation of neighbourhood character. And while the zoning bylaw cannot regulate, for example, architectural detail, it can regulate things like heights, densities, setbacks, floor areas as well, which all help with reinforcing neighbourhood character. There were comments related to the impacts of infill, for example, concerns around privacy, overlook of balconies and such, as well as tree loss. There were comments regarding short-term rental accommodations and how they relate to or the relationship between a reduction in affordable housing. And there were comments related to landscape requirements and parking, in particular, concerns with parking of vehicles in front yard on areas which should be otherwise preserved for stormwater management, green space, that sort of thing. And as well as a desire for zoning in the city's neighbourhoods to address ageing in place and those types of uses that would facilitate ageing in place. Accordingly, we made a number of updates to the strategic directions report recommendations, including a new recommendation to regulate high decks and balconies, a new recommendation to incorporate appropriate definitions for lock coverage, hard landscaping and soft landscaping to differentiate between the two and where they would be permitted on properties, a new recommendation to regulate maximum driveway slope, as well as a new recommendation, as I mentioned, to facilitate ageing in place by allowing for different types of uses as appropriate in neighbourhoods. Next slide, please. The third strategic directions report looks specifically at zoning directions for Young and Carville 16th key development area, Village Local Centre, Oakridges Local Centre, and Newkirk Local Centre. And key recommendations within that report included establishing residential zones and associated regulations that allow for more compact residential development with a range and mix of different dwelling types appropriate to corridors and centres to support housing affordability as well as ageing in place, to permit short-term rental accommodations, again, subject to certain requirements, to restrict new single-detached dwellings except where they would be permitted by the official plan in these particular areas. Next slide, please. Key recommendations also included establishing mixed-use zones and associated regulations within these areas that specify a minimum mixed-use requirements for buildings as appropriate as a percentage of new gross floor area, that permit live-work units and home occupations as well in accordance with the official plan, to permit short-term rental accommodations in mixed-use zones subject to certain requirements, as well as to permit community uses in mixed-use zones, and to incorporate appropriate built form standards. Next slide, please. Key recommendations also included establishing area and issue-specific regulations for Young and Carville 16th key development area, Village Local Centre, Newkirk Local Centre, and this should also include Oakridges Local Centre as well. Next slide, please. So input received during the consultation period related to Oakridges Local Centre-specific concerns, particularly related to things like parking, tree loss, preservation of green space, comments related to existing standalone retail uses, and allowing for interim development of a similar nature in order to ensure their continued viability of those commercial areas. Built form regulations, again, a desire to regulate certain things like height, density, provide appropriate transitions, landscaping requirements, and uses to facilitate ageing in place as well. So accordingly, updates were made, including a new recommendation to protect existing retail, commercial, or office uses and floor area, revised recommendation to clarify and align with the intent of site-specific official plan policy direction for the Hillcrest Mall site in particular. Next slide, please. Revised recommendations on measurement of height, that it may be measured in metres or storeys rather than metres and storeys. A new recommendation for Oakridges Local Centre and Village Local Centre regarding soft landscaping requirements and minimum soil depths to support tree growth. A new recommendation to establish appropriate definitions for hard landscaping, soft landscaping, and lock coverage, as well as a new recommendation to facilitate, again, ageing in place uses. Next slide, please. And so Strategic Directions Report number four addressed zoning for parking and loading and included key recommendations for the zoning bylaw largely based on the work that HDR did for the city in their Parking and Transportation Demand Management Strategy. Earlier this year, around the timing of our open house, Bill 185 received royal assent in June and amended the Planning Act to not allow municipalities to require minimum parking other than for bicycles in protected major transit station areas. As such, the city cannot set minimum parking requirements in these areas, but can still require minimum parking requirements elsewhere in the city. So key recommendations related to parking and loading and the zoning bylaw include establishing an overall reduction of parking space requirements in accordance with the city's official plan, with the Planning Act, with the provincial policy statement, and the growth plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe. Just as a general note, the zoning bylaw will have to also conform with the new provincial planning statement, which combines the growth plan that's coming into effect in October. So that analysis hasn't yet been done, but will be done and will be reported on as we bring forward further items on the zoning bylaw project for consultation. Reducing and minimising surface parking in accordance with the official plan. Next slide, please. The Strategic Directions Report IV generally recommends establishing requirements for the zoning bylaw in accordance with the recommendations of the city's 2024 Parking and Transportation Demand Management Strategy, as I mentioned. The strategy was initiated by the city as an update to the 2010 parking strategy. The 2010 parking strategy was generally determined to have met the needs of the city. However, the industry and policy directions have evolved since 2010 to support more sustainable modes of transportation and lower parking requirements. Next slide, please. Accordingly, recommendations include establishing new parking areas to reflect the city's urban structure, including considerations on the official plan urban structure. the city's urban structure, including considerations on the official plan urban structure, as well as the parking needs of different areas of the city. So each area will have its own set of parking and transportation demand management requirements. In general, areas of the city that are better served by transit and are more walkable will have lower requirements, um, but areas with less transit will have higher parking requirements. Additionally, the strategy modernizes the city's parking requirements and recommends to explore options to include greater transportation demand management measures. The strategy, um, also recommends modernizing the city's parking design standards, which includes updating parking space dimensions, adding electric vehicle parking requirements, and adopting accessible parking standards in accordance with, um, the accessibility legislation. Next slide, please. So input received during the consultation period related to, um, the Bill 185, um, passing parking in car-centric areas of the city to make sure that there was, in fact, adequate parking in areas of the city where, um, where the private automobile is relied upon to get around still. Um, transportation issues specific to wards, um, as well as the associated demand for public transportation and parking as well. Um, no significant updates to Strategic Directions Report Four or the Parking and Transportation Demand Management Strategy were necessary to address the comments received on parking and loading. And before I pass it back over to Anna for next steps, um, I just want to generally say that we're encouraged by the participation thus far from the public. Um, we continue to welcome any comments as they help to inform the drafting of the actual bylaw and regulations. Um, staff and the consulting team have had correspondence with members of the public, with property owners, to discuss, um, the strategic directions as well, um, and we welcome the public reaching out to discuss any concerns or feedback. Um, we will continue to have check-ins to receive input and feedback as set out in the public consultation and engagement strategy for the project. We are still quite early on in this project, um, and in particular, public feedback will be important when we, um, release the actual draft bylaws and the public can see specifically how and which regulations are proposed to apply to their particular neighborhoods or properties as well. So I'll just hand it back over to Anna.
Thank you, Kristi. Um, and, um, in terms of next steps, should, uh, council endorse the Phase Two documents that staff are seeking, um, endorsement of? Staff will then work with the consulting team to begin drafting a Phase One of the Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw, which includes the, the one KDA and the three local centers, as well as the neighborhood, uh, Nate City's Neighborhood Areas and the Leslie Institution, Leslie Street Institutional Area. As mentioned, there, we do have a, a consultation and engagement plan, uh, that has been prepared to ensure that we're targeting the right audiences in, in order to obtain meaningful input. And, um, at the moment, we, um, are, are targeting, are, are scheduled, looking to schedule an open house, um, in October for Phase One A of the Comprehensive Zoning Bylaw. And so that concludes our presentation this morning. Um, like I said, um, staff and the consultant team are here, um, if there are any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, and as you know, we'll, we'll get to that on the agenda and discuss. First, we have some, no, we don't.
To the chair, um, if a council member would like to move a motion to receive the presentation, questions about the presentation could proceed at this time.
My apologies. We have a member of council retreat. Would you like to talk about it now?
Uh, I would, um, maybe consent to receive the, the report first, and then let's discuss later on.
And then which?
Discuss later on. I think there is a one section 11.4, so we're going to discuss.
If we want to discuss it later, does that work? Yeah, so let's do that. So we have a motion on the floor to receive the report. All those in favor? Thank you, that passes. I really appreciate that because we do know that didn't work.
Sorry, sorry, uh, to the chair. So, um, if council, if members of council have any questions about the presentation, that can happen at this time, but the report would be held for after the delegation. So if there's any questions about the presentation right now, would, that would be the time.
I don't see any. Do I? Anybody? Okay, no, we don't. We're good. We did pass that.
To receive, I, I.
We passed the motion to receive the.
Presentation.
The presentation. Yes, thank you. And I was going to say, I appreciate that because we have quite a few guests waiting to speak, so we will move on to delegations. Our first one is Stephen Goderham, and he's here in person, and please take the mic. Welcome, you have five minutes.
Good morning, Mayor, councilor, staff. This is the issue of a zoning bylaw in my neighborhood. My name is Stephen Goderham. I live with my family at Five Cynthia Crescent for over 30 years. My property is beside Number One Cynthia Crescent, directly south adjoining property lines. We strongly oppose this severance. Also, I submitted a petition with over a hundred signatures from the neighborhood that strongly oppose this severance too. Not one person agreed with it, and none of the neighbors know the applicant because he doesn't live in the neighborhood or the house that he bought. The reason for this opposition is as follows. Traffic on Coons Road is very busy and fast-moving. For example, the size of the signs posted, speed signs posted beside One Cynthia Crescent at the top of the hill, they are the biggest signs I've ever seen. By putting two driveways on Coons Road near the top of the hill is just an accident waiting to happen. Next is drainage. By removing old established trees with large root systems and canopies and replacing them with smaller trees with, with no established root system that take many years to grow, this will not stop water or flooding. Also proof of flooding is last year, my neighbor bought the house directly behind me, 57th Cynthia Crescent. They were told by their insurance company that they are in a high-risk flood area and that they didn't want to insure their home. The insurance company name is Dejardin Assurance. I have the agent and the phone number if anybody wants to do a fact, fact check. More proof of flooding is the park at the end of the street is consistently closed due to flooding. When we moved in there 30 years ago, my children used to play in that park and it was never closed. New development out of scale and out of character destabilized the characteristic of the neighborhood. A broken pattern is detrimental to the streetscape. We as neighbors rely on our municipalities to protect our zoning policies in place, and it is a breach of the trust when they are not protected. So to summarize, traffic, drainage, street, streetscape, characteristic of the neighborhood, all present major problems. The facts overwhelmingly point to a bad, unstable plan. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next we have Nick Pelegi. I hope I didn't mess that up too much. Thank you very much. You have five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My name is, uh, Nick Pelegi. I'm a planning consultant, and I'm here on behalf of the owners of One Cynthia Crescent. Uh, I'm also representing Land Services Group, LSG Partners, who are, uh, working with the owners, uh, on this property. And, uh, I do have the slide presentation. Thank you for putting it up. Next slide, please. Uh, so the property is located, uh, on, at One Cynthia Crescent. That's the, um, that's the municipal address. It's the, uh, north end of Cynthia Crescent at the southwest corner of Cynthia Crescent and Coons Road, and it's outlined here, uh, in red. Next slide, please. This is the proposed, uh, site plan. Uh, what's before council, uh, is not necessarily the severance application that would go to the Committee of Adjustment, uh, but what we did bring forward is a, a zoning bylaw amendment, uh, application to deal with the, uh, the lot frontages that are required here, uh, the 19.8 meters. So, uh, the proposal, uh, is for three lots, uh, where currently there's the, the one lot. Um, and then I'll, I'll go through a couple other matters on the next couple slides, but basically the, the property would allow for three single-family detached homes to be built there. Next slide, please. These are some of the conceptual, uh, elevations of what the buildings could look like. Obviously, the, the future owners could, uh, revise this slightly, um, but, uh, you know, that's a typical home that you would see on a 65-foot lot. Next slide, please. So the proposal, as I said, is to create the three, uh, single-family detached lots that are fronting on Coons Road. Uh, in our view, it does maintain the character of the area. It's, it's obviously a little different than the properties immediately to the south on, uh, Cynthia Crescent, but what you're seeing here is a reorientation of the lots so that they front on Coons Road. And you can see on the slide here that the properties to the west and the properties to the north have a significant, significantly different character than the property to the south, um, and east on, uh, Cynthia Crescent. So again, only one home would be visible from Cynthia Crescent, and we are respecting the side yard setback on Cynthia Crescent of 5.8 meters. So if you were to build, tear down the house today and rebuild a single-family detached home, you could cite a home exactly where that third lot is on Cynthia Crescent. So the character on Cynthia Crescent isn't changing because you could build a home based on today's zoning standards in that exact location on the far east side of the lot. We have worked with staff, uh, to resolve matters related to the zoning setbacks, which are all being maintained. The only thing that's changing, uh, in the, uh, proposed zoning amendment is the lot frontage. Uh, we've worked with staff to look at drainage. Uh, I know the deputy just mentioned things like flooding. The site is not in a TRCA-regulated area. It's not in a floodplain. Uh, there may be times of the year, obviously, where there's high water levels and that sort of thing, uh, but this is not within a floodplain area or an area of flooding interest. Uh, in terms of tree removal, there will be some tree removals, but we have worked with staff to recite the, the buildings as much as possible to save as many of the trees as possible. And then lastly, with regards to natural heritage, and, and the main, uh, difference between what, uh, council would have seen when the public meeting is, if you look on the, uh, screen, there is an area now along the south end of the property that we are looking to zone open space. So there is that whole treed area at the south end of the property where we are going to maintain that area and zone it open space. So those trees will stay there, they will not be removed, and they'll continue to provide that buffer between the existing houses and the new homes and the property to the south on, on Cynthia Crescent. So that area that you can see below the rural zone on the zoning map that's in front of you, that'll be maintained as green space and none of those trees will be touched. Um, we've revised Lot One to deal with drainage issues and protect certain trees along the boundary so that we didn't have to impact any of the, the trees that are at the back of the three homes that are on the other side of Cynthia Crescent, the west extent of Cynthia Crescent. Uh, and we've maintained all of the development standards in the zoning bylaw that are currently in the zoning today. The only thing we're looking to change is the lot frontages. So, uh, in terms of looking at the character or destabilizing the character of the area, I think that, that's tacitly incorrect. Um, we're maintaining the exact same setbacks that the zoning bylaw would permit.
Sorry to interrupt, but our little bell didn't go off. You have 15 seconds left.
15 seconds. I'm on the last point.
All right. Well, you can give it in 13 seconds. Go.
Yeah, staff have provided, uh, a recommendation in support of the proposal, and that's our recommendation to council as well, that the proposal be supported. Thank you.
You made it. Thank you. Our next delegate is Jack Tai. He is online. Hello, Mr. Tai, can we hear you? Say hello, please.
Yes, uh, can you?
Oh, you're here. Okay, you have five minutes. Thank you.
Sounds good. Uh, good morning, everyone, Madam Chair, Mayor West, and council members. Uh, my name is Jack Tai, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Don Crust Community, representing 193 constituents, composed of 171 Don Crust residents and 22 West Beaver Creek Commercial Unit representatives, plus 520 online signatures, all requesting the council votes to not receive the staff report, not approve the proposed Rogers Cell Tower site at 120 West Beaver Creek, and issue a letter of non-concurrents to ISED ISID. The application for the cell tower should be rejected for many reasons, including that the Richmond Health Protocol for public consultation has not been adhered to. I direct your attention to the document titled Addressing Staff Report for Item 11.5 SRPBS. Point 24.089, which I will refer to as Addressing Staff Report. Section Two Public Consultation outlines the timeline taken for this public consultation. From March 30th, 2023 to September 18th, 2024, a total of 538 days. This far exceeds the federal government's and Richmond Health Protocol public consultation timeframes. This has caused residents mental stress, uncertainty, and anxiety over the health and safety of the families and community. Letters to the Council of Richmond Health titled Request for Richmond Health Council to Vote Non-Concurrents Read 120 West Beaver Creek and Addressing Staff Report outline numerous failures by the proponents to follow the Richmond Health Protocol. The constituents of Richmond Health must have confidence and trust that the city and council will ensure full adherence to the protocol of all aspects. Forbes Bros. representing Rogers told the public there would be 12 antennas on the proposed cell tower. A report from Rogers produced much later in the process indicated Rogers planned to initially install 42 transmitters on the cell tower. Furthermore, critical questions from the public remains unanswered, leaving the community without the clarity and transparency they're entitled to. The diagram in the staff report on misleading as to the full visual impact of the tower. Neither the location map on Page Two nor the maps in the pendants clearly indicates where the proposed cell tower is situated or what it will look like. The tower with as many as 42 transmitters and perhaps more will dominate the view from the nearby homes. This clearly contradicts the statement made on the relationship to protocol objectives, which says, quote, "The location of the antenna system does not impact the existing streetscape and any significant sidelines that are present on the subject lands and in the immediate surrounding areas," end of quote. Don Crust residents do not want this view from their backyard. An ISED ISID official has stated in email response on August 8th, 2024, that a letter of a concurrence from each land use authority involved is considered to be the approval to proceed with putting up a cell tower, but only after all the necessary consultation steps are complete per the relevant protocol. He also stated, quote, "It is up to the council to determine that the protocol in place has been fully complied with and both the land use authority and the public consultation aspects has been satisfactorily completed," end of quote. He further added, "If the council has relevant concerns relating to the satisfactory completion of the protocol process, whether relating to land use authority and/or their public consultation, the council has the option to submit a letter of non-concurrents." Upon thorough review of the staff report, it is clear that these conditions have not been met, and the report should not be received by council until all outstanding issues are clarified and addressed adequately. On behalf of the Don Crust Community, we believe the Rogers proposed site at 120 West Beaver Creek Road is not appropriate and urge the council not to receive the staff report and be clear about its intentions by issuing a letter of non-concurrents. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Catherine Sukerman, and she's here in person. Welcome, and you have five minutes.
Madam Chairman, members of the council, um, I'm here, uh, to let you know that I've been living very happily and healthily in my house since the year 2000. Now, my two-year-old grandson is living with me, and furthermore, I'm expecting another grandchild in 2025. Given this fact, I'm very concerned regarding the effects of these towers on the, um, development and health of these very young children. I would expect, uh, and in addition, there are young children two doors away from me. There are many young children, young families that are coming and living, uh, with us, uh, close to these towers. So I would not expect to have, uh, such worries after 25 years of healthy living in this beautiful neighborhood. Surely it behooves a city to protect the youngest members of a community, to make sure that they grow up in a healthy manner and not have any, uh, health issues in the future and, and worries for the parents. uh, health issues in the future and and worries for the parents. So I believe uh, this is not an appropriate location for a cell tower. I request that the council vote non-concurrents and perhaps find a location that is not so close to a neighborhood with young children. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Justin C. Forgive me if I'm... And you are here as well? Welcome. You have five minutes.
You got my name, right?
All right, good for me.
Uh, I just want to say good morning to the Mayor West and uh, also all the council members. Good morning. All the staffers, good morning to you as well. Um, I am also a resident of the Doncress community, and I'm here to strongly urge you guys to not approve the staff report, the SRPD PB dot two four dot zero eight nine, the building of a proposed cellphone tower at one twenty West Beaver Creek Road, and send a letter of non-concurrents to the Innovation, Science, and Economic Development for for this project. I address here two critical concerns. One, the liability insurance for the radio frequency emissions, and two, the lack of demand of this proposed tower. First off, uh, regarding the liability insurance, we request that the parent company Rogers to document liability insurance. However, uh, to actually to exclude health claims and related to the radio frequency exposure. However, on their annual report, it highlights the risk associated with RF uh, radio frequency emissions, saying that from time to time, media and other reports have highlighted links between radio frequencies and wireless devices, including the new 5G technologies, and various health concerns, including cancer and interference with various medical devices, including hearing aids and pacemakers. This may discourage the use of wireless devices or exposures to Rogers to potential litigation. This is on their report. Furthermore, there is a lot of insurance companies and perhaps even more that we don't know about. They consider electromagnetic fields such as these emitted by the cellphone tower's antenna to be pollutants, which means that they will exclude coverage for in any radio frequency-related health claims. If Richmond Hill have appropriate coverage, this leaves our Doncress community at risk at any and any health issue arises. Who will be responsible then? If Rogers do acknowledge the potential litigation and insurance company also exclude coverage, will Richmond Hill Council be certain that it will be protected from any uh, health litigations from our residents? Now I'm going to address the uh, second, second concern, which is the needs for this tower. Rogers has demonstrated that this needs for a tower to to provide services for Rogers subscribers only. But there's no evidence that there's a service gap in our area. Out of the one hundred and twenty-three home affected, one hundred and nineteen people oppose this tower being built within four hundred meters of their home. Three people don't care if it's built, and only one person doesn't wish to sign anything. So majority, ninety-six percent, will oppose of this building of this tower. So none of the residents speak, uh, as one of the residents speaking, do not want this infrastructure near our neighborhood. In conclusion, the lack of coverage and the absence of demonstrated uh, demonstrated need make this proposal unacceptable. I urge that the council will vote down this uh, vote not to receive this staff report, S P SRP BBS dot two four dot zero eight nine, and issue a letter of non-concurrents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Shelley Wright, and she is online. I think your camera's off, Ms. Wright. And I think you're muted, too. Can you say hello so we know we can hear you? Nope.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, you have five minutes. Welcome.
Thank you. I'm the Director of Canadian Educators for Safe Technology. We work with teachers and families of children injured by wireless microwave RF radiation, such as cell tower emissions. Next slide. This declaration calls authorities to apply legal principles to protect children from wireless pollutants. Precautionary principles safeguard succeeding generations. Next slide, please. Children are disproportionately impacted by wireless RF pollutants. Health Canada encouraged parents to reduce children's RF exposure and claimed children are more sensitive to environmental agents. RF radiation penetrates deeper into children's critical brain regions and the developing nervous system. Next, please. Integrative cardiologist Dr. Stephen Sinatra reports cardiac arrests are increasing in children. Quote, "Microwave signals interfere with the autonomic nervous system that regulates the heart." Next slide, please. Cell tower-induced cancer clusters can become costly mistakes. In Ripon, California, twelve students and staff casualties plus a hundred neighbors battled cancer within five hundred meters of a monopole before it was removed from school property. Eight students and four teachers were diagnosed with breast, kidney, brain, or liver cancers. One student had many surgeries and treatments that resulted in brain necrosis, nerve pain, and paralysis on the left side of his body, bone degradation in both shoulders, loss of hearing in the right ear, loss of vision in the right eye, which had been sutured shut, and the brain and spine cancers continue to return year after year. Next slide. These biological effects of wireless exposures are globally recognized in medical, scientific, and legal practices. Dr. Bray, Director of Environmental Clinic Women's College Hospital, reports that three to thirty percent of citizens living near towers are likely to become ill. A recent successful legal settlement in Ontario supported a wirelessly injured child. Medical records can establish a cluster of illnesses which support class action lawsuits for multiple plaintiffs. Council may be ordered to take costly steps to instate alternative services already recommended by your community. Next, please. Within five hundred meters, studies show a significant increase in neurobehavioral symptoms and cancer. A municipal health study in Brazil showed increased cancer mortality. An Israel study found risk of cancer quadrupled among people living within three hundred and fifty meters. Doncress School is a mere four hundred meters from the proposed cell tower, the playground only three hundred and fifty meters, posing serious risk threat to students. Last year, eighteen Toronto teachers refused work regarding a cell tower-induced injury. We recommend a buffer zone of nine hundred to a thousand meters or adherence to precautionary building biology guidelines to ensure that RF levels on the playgrounds are less than one hundred microwatts per meter squared. Next, please. ISED, quote, "Encourages local governments to create sitting protocols that reflect and protect local interests." Quote, "ISED accepts letters of non-concurrents for cell tower proposals where there is strong opposition," unquote. This location lacks justification for development, its proximity to Doncress Public School, visual impact, and harm or displacement of vulnerable residents. You represent your community's needs. Young families do not consent to cellular emissions. Inclusive fiber optic services are available. Next, please. Pollution is costly. Safeguarding the health, property, well-being, and the environment avoid future liabilities. Neither cell tower companies nor Health Canada are liable for health claims. Neither you nor our cell tower proponents have insurance against legal claims. Insurance companies will not accept this risk. The federal regulator ISED promotes wired fiber optics and wireless services. You are the elected elected officials in this community, serving the needs of this community with integrity and transparent decisions to protect children and families. Last slide, please. Cell towers have been moved, removed, relocated, or prohibited at or near schools in Toronto, parts of the U.S., and around the world. Fiber optics to the premises, FTP, is less expensive and more energy efficient, faster and resilient, enabling families to use wireless networks inside the home and turn off Wi-Fi at night. Emergency vehicles have cell boosters to amplify weak signals. Along with present wireless services, no new cell tower is needed.
Excuse me, I'm sorry to interrupt. Your time's up.
Non-concurrents. Thank you.
Next, we have Joyce Fox, and she is online.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam. Good morning, Madam Chair, Mayor West and council members. I am a Richmond Hill resident. My comments will focus on the correspondence provided to this council meeting, addressed to the city of Richmond Hill Council, subject, Concerns and Questions Regarding Staff Report SRPBS dot twenty-four dot zero eight nine, Rogers Communications Cell Tower Proposed Site, one twenty West Beaver Creek Road, which I will refer to as correspondence. Having reviewed the staff report, some clarification is necessary as to the transparency and intent of this report. If council votes to receive this staff report, it appears council will effectively be voting to approve the proposed cell tower at one twenty West Beaver Creek Road. The council should not, should vote not to receive this staff report until concerns and questions have been adequately addressed. Correspondence, Section One, Recommendations, Point A, asks for the staff report to be received. So how does this work? The Planning and Building Services Development Planning Department recommends the council to vote to receive the staff report. But under Key Messages, planning staff recommend that council support the Radio Communication and Broadcasting Antenna Systems Public Consultation Application. Point B asks council to acknowledge that consideration of the proposed Radio Communication and Broadcasting Antenna System has been undertaken. The staff report fails to attest that the public consultation process that was carried out fully complies with the protocol. Point C, request that staff be directed to inform Industry Canada, which is now Innovation Science and Economic Development ISID, that half the protocol process has been completed, while it is clear that there are still outstanding public concerns. Is it the staff's intent to send a concurrents letter to ISID for half the public consultation process? I don't believe ISID has such an option. Correspondence, Section Two, Background and Public Notification. Information obtained through a municipal Freedom of Information request highlights missing items relating to the application. Public notification included a miscalculation in the in the notification radius for the residents that created a smaller notification zone than required by the protocol. And the public consultation was allowed to drag on for five hundred and thirty-eight days when the protocol states public consultation period would be a maximum of a hundred and twenty days. Correspondence, Section Three, Understanding Jurisdiction and Concluding Public Consultation. The correspondence provides information directly obtained from ISID Spectrum Management Officer Ace that clearly lays out ISID's role, the public consultation process, council's responsibilities, council's choices, should they not agree with the application presented, and clarifies that the proponent or council may be, may request dispute resolution should they choose. Correspondence, Section Four, Relates to Protocol Objectives. I invite you to look at the pictorial evidence that refutes the staff report's statement. Item three, quote, "The location of the proposed antenna system does not impact the existing streetscape and any significant sidelines that are present both on the subject lands and the immediate surrounding area." Clearly, this is not the case. A Rogers cell antenna, uh, cell tower does not belong on this proposed site. The council should vote not to receive this staff report until concerns and questions have been adequately answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Sarah Duncan, and she is online. Hello, can you say hello back so we know we can hear you?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Can you hear me?
We can. You have five minutes. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, good morning, Madam Chair and members of council. My name is Sarah Duncan, and I am with Forbes Brothers, who has been retained by Rogers Communications to work with the municipality and consult with residents in regards to the proposed telecommunications tower at one twenty West Beaver Creek Road. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, I'm going to just provide a high-level summary of the process to date and what's been undertaken in working with both the Planning Department and residents. The first slide here shows an overview of, uh, you can see the site outlined in red, and the pin locations around it are existing telecommunications uh, infrastructure by both Rogers Bell and other carriers. As you can see, there is no existing infrastructure in this area as a colocation is always the first option when looking to deploy additional networks. Um, so hence the reason for the proposed application. Next slide, please. This slide shows the existing coverage within the Doncress area. Uh, as you can see, the area in the middle is a kind of a neon green, showing that there is very limited coverage to the level of what we call in-car. The proposed tower, if you go to the next slide, is in order to increase that coverage to a level of in-building. So the reason for the request is that the the communication uh, within homes and within buildings is not adequate in this area. Next slide, please. So this is the the property where the tower is being proposed. It is in um, an industrial area. It was selected because of the coverage needs. It also, as I mentioned, is in an industrial zone, which is a preferred location for these towers. It's buffered by woodland areas and as well has obviously a willing landowner. Uh, all the reasons that work for an engineering perspective. If you go to the next slide, please. So this is the um, the site layout. Uh, as you can see, the circle is where the tower will be located. It'll be on the west end of the property. It will be between a hundred to a hundred and thirty meters from the residential area. The tower is twenty-seven meters in height and is a slimline self-support tower, um, not representing what's been shown in in other photos of a tower design. The goal of this tower is to have the antennas flush-mounted, so more of an aesthetic design. And with this um, self-support design, it will also allow for future colocation by other carriers or any emergency services. Uh, if you go to the next slide, this is just a photo sim of the tower looking from West Beaver Creek Road to the west. Next slide, please. Um, where we are at in the process. Uh, in two thousand twenty-two, an application was made to the Planning Department, and it was deemed complete, allowing the application to proceed to consultation. As noted on the slide, all the requirements of the consultation process were followed, meeting the protocol. The mail-out notification was done from the property boundary as opposed to the tower location, which did allow for an extended notification radius. There were many questions raised from the public, and um, I guess extensive discussions back and forth and responding to questions was carried out over a significant timeframe. And the Planning Department, obviously, by moving forward with this report uh, has deemed our consultation complete. You could go to the next slide, please. Um, feedback has been received from the the residents and has been recorded and responded to. Many of the air, the areas of concern were regarding site placement, health and safety, and antenna information. You go to the next slide, please. In summary, we feel this location addresses our coverage need and is in an industrial area, represents, or pardon me, has resulted in meeting the protocol and consultation, and therefore, we are asking for uh, council's support to accept the report from planning staff and move forward to concurrents.
Thank you. Next, we have Donna Chan. She's also online.
Hi.
Hi, and I think your camera's off.
Oh.
Oh. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can see you, we can hear you. Welcome, you have five minutes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, good morning, Mayor West and council members. I am here to oppose the plan for a twenty-seven meter cell tower at one twenty West Beaver Creek Road. This tower could be increased by up to thirty-three point seven five meters without any more public input, which would have a huge impact on our neighborhood. The tower would greatly change the look of our area, ruining the view and affecting the charm of our community. The attached residence rendering of the proposed cell tower in the Concerns and Questions Regarding Staff Report shows how out of place this tower will be in our neighborhood. What worries me even more is that a child's bedroom is only one hundred and ten meters away from the proposed tower. Additionally, there is one elementary school within a four hundred meter radius of the site. Do we really want our kids growing up under such a large and potentially harmful structure as reported by experts? Furthermore, the proponent initially informed the public that the proposed tower would have twelve antennas. However, a subsequent report from Rogers reviewed the plans to install forty-two transmitters. This discrepancy raises concerns regarding the accuracy and transparency of the information provided to the community. How can we trust the process when such significant changes are made without clear communication? Besides the visual and health concerns, the tower could also lower property values and hurt the overall beauty of our community. By standing against this proposal, the council will send a clear message that you stand with the residents of our community. This decision will not only preserve the character and quality of life in our neighborhood, but will also solidify your reputation as champions of our community's well-being. So I urge you to, one, reject staff report, SRPBS dot two four dot zero eight nine. Two, oppose the tower's location at one twenty West Beaver Creek Road. And three, send a letter of non-concurrence to ISED. Thank you for your attention to this important matter.
And thank you. That concludes our delegations. Um, I do want to um, mention to council that with advice from the um, clerk is to go to eleven-four and discuss the comprehensive zoning bylaw next. So could I have someone move that? Thank you, Councilor Tree, all those in favor. That passes, so we will move on to eleven point four. And who would like to speak? Councilor Tree, you have the floor.
Okay, thank you so much. Uh, so regarding eleven point four, I do have two sections. I want to maybe uh, get more information. I know this is really draft, uh, draft faces, there's maybe no details, but I just want to see from a overall perspective. So first one, thank you so much for everybody put a lot of effort uh, for this comprehensive bylaw. I know it's really time-consuming. In the history of City Richmond Hill, we do have lots of bylaws, and also new demanding, new changes in the scope of this pro, proposals as well. Thank you, appreciate all that efforts. My first question is still regarding the parkings and parking and loadings. So that's on the page seven, STR four, zoning for parking. Uh, as we all know, the government from Ontario asking uh, maybe no parking requirement, a minimum requirement along the uh, a certain corridor, especially Young Street. But from the experience or the, the problem we are facing is when the new residents moving to City Richmond Hill, it's one case in my world, and they do have two cars, they only have one parking lot. They're looking for a public parking spot for city perspective, who could not find it, either the senior center or nearby community center. Regarding this is two thousand and twenty-five new strategies. I'm assuming along the highway side of the Young Street, we're gonna see more and more residents moving uh, to this, uh, different OPA areas. What is the high level of, of our strategy to provide additional parkings? If in case they do have demand, whenever it's rising itself or friends visiting or parties or visitor, whatever, uh, what is our long-term strategies for uh, city-owned parking or private sector providing, providing this type of parking? Thank you.
I go to the Commissioner. Uh, Commissioner, Ms. Sarah.
Through the chair. Uh, Councilor Tree. Thank you for the question, and uh, further to the comments and presentation from Ms. Kilborn, uh, we identified that there'd be a, a variety of different parking strategies based on key areas, uh, that in uh, less intensified areas, there would be certain parking rates, whereas up and down Young Street, where uh, there's existing transit and whatnot, there would be uh, different applications of, of rates and lower parking rates as a result of the fact that there is uh, more transportation viva and all the other sort of things. So I do have staff on hand, and I can uh, defer to Director Terziewski in the event that uh, there's any further questions to expand on.
Okay. So I have my second question regarding to the, a short-term rental, um, accommodations here. Uh, we are seeing more and more demandings from marketing and looking for the short-term uh, Airbnb example. But meantime, we also receive a lot of complaints from nearby residents. They complain about traffic, the noise issues, the light issues, and a lot of complaints regarding this short-term rental services. So uh, in our new strategies here by laws, any, any regulations or any measures we can put this service more healthy? Example, one time we permit this service to be running, but another time we protect our nearby residents, reduce noise, reduce lighting, reduce traffic, illegal parking, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you, and can I confirm you moved the motion to?
Received.
Received, thank you. Next, we have Mayor West.
Thank you very much. Um, so thank you very much for the presentation. Uh, I, I, it certainly is a lot to take in, uh, even just the strategic directions report. Um, I, I understand that you're responsible for most of this package. Uh, but I will say it's an important thing that uh, we're doing here. And, and one of the things that I see in my daily uh, life i- is as elected representative is, is the impact that old zoning bylaws have on almost everybody. Um, you know, the, the people who are trying to develop in the neighborhood are, in many cases in Richmond Hill, are dealing with, with zoning bylaws that are way, way, way out of date and are talking about the types of uh, built structures and so on that would have been happening back in the seventies. Um, and people aren't building like that anymore, so it's, it's an immediate frustration for them. But it's also an immediate frustration for the community because the community reads the zoning bylaw and, and understands that, you know, this is what the rules are. But what it doesn't say is that the, the rules are something that is completely, in many cases, unrealistic because it's based on something that would have been built back in the nineteen seventies. So I think, you know, there's, there's no question that everybody, I think, will benefit from a new zoning bylaw that, that sets a modern, acceptable standard of what we are looking for as a vision in our community. So for that, I am thankful, and I can't wait for that day. Um, so a couple of things about this. I think the, the, the general conversation that I want to leave us with here today is there's several things that I think are really important that we capture in this. And you've talked about this in your presentation, and I think, I don't really have any questions about it. But the, the number one thing that we need to look at is protection of existing neighborhoods. In Richmond Hill, we have a number of well-established existing neighborhoods that are, that, you know, need to have a level of protection that's reasonable. Now, that's not to say that things can't be allowed to develop in that neighborhood, um, because that's important as well. We can't put a neighborhood in a, in a glass jar and, and expect it to stay exactly the same way because it'll go nowhere but downhill we do that. So it needs to be, you know, we need to allow things to happen that are up to today's modern standard while, you know, respecting everybody else's um, needs in the community. So I want us to be working very, very hard on making sure that a, a reasonable balance is achieved in that regard. Um, and, and I mean, that has to do with the, the character of the neighborhood. I'm really pleased to hear that we've had good feedback from the public. This is incredibly important. Um, you know, we as elected representatives can explain what the public is saying to us for sure, and we'll do that in, at meetings like this and in other meetings that we've had. Um, but I think it's important to hear this directly from the public. The one thing I did want to talk about is short-term rentals. Um, so I, I want to just make sure I understand this, that the approach of, we, we really are, it would be very problematic, I think, to disallow short-term rentals. I, I mean, in all honesty, from my perspective, I would love to see that because I'm not sure, um, the, the, the whole ability for, for short-term rentals to happen in a, in a existing neighborhood. I have severe concerns about that. But what I think our approach here is we're trying to allow short-term rentals but only in primary residence, which means that the owner of the house needs to be there when the short-term rental is happening. So you're not renting out the whole house. They're not, there's not going to be big giant explosive parties going on in a short-term rental that's, that the owner lives in the house because they're going to be keeping them up at night too. Can I just get some further understanding as to what is the approach that we're proposing? And how does it stack up to uh, any successes that other municipalities have had in that regard? I'm not sure who to ask that to.
I can respond, thank you, through the chair. Um, as far as short-term rental accommodation and the direction in the proposed strategic uh, directions reports regarding short-term rental accommodations, the city did retain Gladkey, another planning firm, to do a technical study background analysis that was completed. The final report is dated two thousand and twenty-two. Um, we are mindful that things are rapidly evolving, so we're definitely monitoring what's happening in other jurisdictions. Um, Gladkey had looked at, um, you know, neighbors such as Vaughan who permit this with conditions. Um, to your point, um, Mayor West requiring that um, they only be permitted in um, occupier primary residence. Um, and so that helps to address some of that. Um, issues such as noise, nuisance, that sort of thing aren't things that we can control within the zoning bylaw itself. Some other municipalities also have licensing and permitting that goes along with short-term rental accommodations. Um, we did review the comments that were submitted um, from the public with concerns around the impacts potentially to affordable housing. Um, and so, um, as far as putting conditions on that, um, it would have to be a primary occupied dwelling, so not a absentee landlord um, or foreign investor type um, situation that would not be permitted. Um, I think the two are not necessarily mutually exclusive um, as far as affordable housing units and short-term rental accommodations. They serve different functions, different audiences. There are many members of the community who may need temporary, not a long-term lease um, for renovations um, to, because they want a larger home in a move or that sort of thing as well. Um, so they do serve functions. Um, I mentioned Vaughan, Oakville was another community. Um, of course, Mississauga, Toronto, that also permit within their bylaw with some conditions around that. So um, I think we definitely appreciate the concerns, and we'll be looking to try to again find the balance, to your point, of addressing the concerns related to short-term rental accommodations as well as the benefits for the community too.
Okay, I, I'm, I, I mean, I, I, I think there's more that we need to do with regard to some of the things you're talking about as well, but I think this is a good place to start. What I absolutely want to stop seeing any sign of in our community is having these blowout wild parties in these houses that are not occupied by the owner and are just causing havoc in the rest of the community. There's one that I, I know of in, in, not too far from where I live, so I'm fairly familiar with it, and it's in the ward that I was a councillor for, for quite some time. And it's completely unreasonable what goes on in this place. So we need to stop that kind of thing. But I really do believe that if you, you know, if you're just renting out a, a room or two in your house to, you know, for a short period of time, every now and again, I, I don't, and the owner is living there, and I think that's the key, right? The, the owner has to be in that house at that time. Um, I think this is a good place to start. So um, I'll, I'm not out of time, but um, I may actually have another question on a round two, but we'll see how it goes. Thanks very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Deputy Mayor Godwin Chan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, staff and the consultant make their presentation. What Mayor West has asked, it touched my heart. I actually moved a motion back in two thousand and nineteen, asking staff with council's approval at the time to look into the feasibility of licensing of, uh, for this short-term rental accommodation. I don't need to repeat what Mayor also shared, some of nuisance in a number of areas. And I heard that before, our bylaw would take care of it. Uh, there have been examples actually of successes um, that particularly in the West Coast, both City of Vancouver, City of Richmond, I have sit in City of Richmond, British Columbia, council meeting whereby they look at all this permit licensing system. It worked there, in fact, to get cooperation of the Airbnb. Now, moving back to where we are here, there's, this is an issue I feel very strongly. Uh, when I was a ward councillor, that I've got complaints, particularly during this season, so to speak. Um, so that's something, um, I'm just wondering that to the extent that uh, we can do monitoring, if, uh, since we're not doing um, licensing such as City of Toronto has been doing, um, what process for you, Madam Chair, uh, to the staff? How do we monitor to ensure that actually the owner is also at the site, at the location? I mean, it could be a principal residence, but how do we know whether the, the owner actually lived there unless we have some kind of system like a licensing permitting that the city is make aware of rather than go to some of the virtual sites to see, oh, where's the short-term rental accommodation in City of Richmond Hill? Through you, Madam Chair. What's the process of monitoring and enforcing?
Chair, um, the, the municipality is able to enforce zoning bylaw compliance. Um, I would defer to your bylaw enforcement, whoever is responsible for bylaw enforcement to indicate um, how actually zoning bylaw enforcement takes place in the City of Richmond Hill. In other places, typically, it's on a complaints basis um, that the city would enforce zoning bylaw provisions to then get the verification that indeed um, they are complying with the bylaw, that the um, person who is operating the Airbnb or other, um, through other rental providers is actually a primary um, occupant, whether that's through a, a lease or through they own the home, but they, their driver's licenses are there. I'm not entirely um, sure how the city actually goes about bylaw enforcement.
Thank you. Your last few words are, I still remain concerned, I know we cannot solve here. But, but that to me is an issue. I mean, it looks good on paper, but how are we going to monitor and force? And um, you touch on it, I'm not going to drag on it. I remain um, concerned. And Mayor West, if I can interpret correctly, it's also something you have to watch very carefully because to touch on other things on parking, uh, you know, in terms of uh, sanitation and so on, so on. Now, get to parking, I just mentioned. Uh, I'm happy to see that there will be special parking uh, areas. Um, now, um, I know committee or council is asking to endorse, I guess at this time of principle. Um, I would be interested in seeing fleshing out in terms of where are the specific areas? Maybe it's all in the technical papers. Um, is that timeline that the staff make share with us or consultants share what we're looking at? Um, the reason I mention that is that the timeline is crucial in particular The reason I mention that is that the timeline is crucial in particular education, if I may say so, public education. We can decide the best parking specialized strategy over the world or in Richmond Hill. But if people are not aware of it, then of not as familiar, then it defeats the purpose. So through you, Madam Chair, timeline and the consideration of public education campaign, so to speak.
Through the chair, as far as the parking strategy areas, so those were set out by HDR in the city's Parking and Transportation Demand Management Strategy. I believe it is an appendix to, to what you received on your agenda. It went as an accompaniment with Strategic Directions Report Number Four regarding parking. So that actually sets out and rationalizes the different parking areas within the city. So the zoning by law would be reflective of those delineations of the four different parking areas that have been set out as well as the different rates that have been set out in that parking strategy for those areas. That was available for our public open house meeting. That report was available. We did have questions and input on the basis of that strategy at the open house as well as subsequent to that too. And have been working very closely with the city's engineering staff as well as it relates to parking and standards. As far as the education component, there may be something we can do concurrently through our zoning by law engagement. So we can take that back to our consulting team, Lura, who's leading that work. However, they will be consulted and those areas will be made explicit as well as the parking rates for vehicle parking. All of that sort of thing will be made available for public consultation and for just notification, generally speaking, so.
Thank you very much. I'm just put on the radar board, so to speak. And, and I'm sure our staff is aware of it. Our neighboring City of Vaughan, I actually just had a meeting last week specifically on same thing. That this comprehensive zoning review they are conducting right now. And their meeting last week was on parking. So it's maybe some lesson learned, share and that. There's no doubt we need to modernize the whole zoning by law that had been around for a long time. The only last thing I want to touch on is the bill form. If I read it correctly, that means that we will be having this, what some people call it a middle, what's the term? Lower middle.
Missing middle, missing middle.
Is that meaning that this would be, if we're moving forward, those lower medium density would be coenanco allow permit under the future zoning by law through you, Madam Chair?
Through the chair. Opportunities for those forms of housing will be explored in accordance with the city's official plan policies, which direct that those may be permitted as well in different areas of the city.
I know we, I only have 20 minutes or so. So that means they will lead to a result in as of right of four housing units per lot. Is that not true?
Through the chair. I believe the city is undertaking a different initiative for the four stories, four units. I can, I would, I would suggest staff speak to that.
Would staff like to speak to that? Thank you, Ms. Janetta.
Good morning. Through, through the chair to councillor Chen. So the city is currently pursuing a four-story, four-unit half initiative that is being led by a project manager as part of the comprehensive zoning by law team. And we'll be bringing forward those recommendations as part of our commitment to our half initiative later this year and early next year in accordance with those commitments. And to be clear, those commit, the exploration of four units, four stories are not as of right across the city. They were in specific targeted areas that we defined at the outset to explore. So they won't be as an as of right condition across the city, but in a strategic areas that made sense for the city.
Thank you. Looking forward to it. And thank you, Madam Chair, and good stuff for the responses.
Thank you. Next we have councillor Xu.
Is it okay? Is it clear? Okay. Thanks, Madam Chair, and thanks for your presentation. It's really comprehensive. And thanks for your good work. And I have only one question. It's about the short-term rental accommodations and, and parking. And as, as, as we all know that S T R A is becoming popular. But from the parking perspective, that's another story, especially for townhouses where this parking space is very limited there. So if the comprehensive zoning by law address regulation for S T R As in the future, is there any coming bylaws to also strictly regulate parking on driveways and the roadside at the same time? Through the chair.
Through the chair in response, we will take back those, those really valid comments related to the parking implications of short-term rental accommodations. And we can discuss with staff whether there's any way to address those as far as whether there's best practices in other municipalities that we can look to as well.
Okay, can we elaborate my question through the chair? Is there any coming bylaws to, to regulate the maximum vehicles parking on the driveway? And also the stricter restriction on the roadside parking duration, something like that?
Through the chair. The zoning by law does deal with parking on private property. And so will regulate the, both a minimum in certain areas outside of protected major transit station areas. A minimum amount of parking as well as a maximum amount of parking. So the parking strategy, that is the appendix to this report, does set out parking rates for different areas of the city to regulate the parking onsite. Any on-street parking, anything that's in the public right-of-way wouldn't be subject to the zoning by law and would be again a municipal permitting matter, but another option for the city to explore.
Okay, that's all of my comments. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next we have councillor Liu.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you very much for the report. I, I think I have the same concern, so I'm not going to repeat with, in terms of short-term rentals and parking. I just wanted to reiterate, I called mayor's comment that there's a, there are certain neighborhoods in Richmond Hill that need certain level of protection. And I'll say it out loud, Bayfield Hill is one of them. I think we need to look carefully into it and then hopefully not touch it. And, and, and also there's other neighborhood too. So I think it's important that what, what we are doing here today is to endorse the recommendation, which is to kickstart the process. And I look forward to seeing the, the result of, of the consultation. And in, in, in terms of engagement, I also would like to, not only the public, but if we can do more consultation with one-on-one or, you know, in groups with the council members, that would be appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we go to round two, I want to make some comments myself, since we're talking about Airbnb. There was one in Ward One last summer that was a nightmare, and I think it's a huge burden to leave it to the residents to continually complain about their neighbors. It causes bad blood and it was a huge draw on the resources of by law. So my suggestion would be severe penalties for the first party, you're out. That's it. You lose your license. You can have, you can appeal it or you can try again, but we really can't mess with this. It completely disturbs a neighborhood, can take away the joy of their home, their backyard, parking, all the rest of it. So I, I, I wish we could consider not having Airbnbs, but if we're going to, I like the idea of having someone having to be living in the building, although I don't know, I agree with councillor Chen, I don't know how we regulate that. But if there is one party, there has to be a severe consequence. Because it took all summer to shut down this party that had been based, this party house that had been terrorizing one street for years. My other comment I'd like to say about parking, I'm so worried about parking because I feel a little bit like until we cut the ribbon on the subway at high tech. It's a little bit like, I know I'm showing my age, but a Peanuts cartoon where we're going to go kick the football and it's going to be moved. Going to be moved because we're going to limit parking in transit, in future transit. And there's really no guarantee that that's ever going to happen. I mean, transit gets delayed for decades. Transit runs out of money. There's changes of government. I, I really worry about minimum and maximum transit, parking in transit areas. So I, I don't know where that leads us. It's have to say I want to flag it because I, I grew up at Highway Seven young and the subway was coming in the seventies. So I really think we need to be mindful that we can't put all our eggs in the basket, that there's going to be a subway there in any specific given time. And who wants to live in Richmond Hill if there's nowhere to put your car? So those would be my comments. Mayor West, do you want round two?
If I could just, a couple of points I didn't have time for. So I, just in response to what was said earlier, like, I mean, so we're talking about the comprehensive zoning by law today. We're not talking about licensing of short-term rentals. That's another conversation. So, but you know, since it was brought up, I, I have no doubt that, that what we're proposing here today will go some distance, if not a good distance in helping to us regulate it because it's tools that we can use. You know, we're going to have to follow up in some cases on whether the owner actually lives there or not. Of course, we're going to have to do that no matter what. If we are licensing, we're still going to have to follow up on the conditions of the license. But that's not to say that we can't license it later, but licensing has a cost to the municipality. It's going to cost the taxpayers money in order to have a licensing system in place. So that's a conversation for another day, but I, I think we are on the right track. And I think we are all, you know, getting phone calls that are, you know, outrageous situations that need to stop because of a use in, in a municipality that is completely incompatible with the rest of the community that it's in. And that's, that's ultimately what it boils down to. The, the point that I wanted to talk about though is, is the other thing, and I did read this in the staff report, and I think we're heading in a, I think we're heading in a good direction on this, is, is basically the issue of parking on the front lawn, you know? But a lot of our municipal, sorry, a lot of our individual communities in Richmond Hill. You know, we spent a lot of time and effort with regulations and with encouraging residents to, you know, make the front, you know, facade yard presented well at the street, and that's a big value to the community for sure. You know, having unregulated ability for people to park as many cars as they want on the front lawn. It really takes away a lot of that value. And, and, you know, I get it, parking's at a minimum. You know, you have kids moving back in, at, to home and they, they need an additional car and, and all the rest of it. But what we're really looking for in this exercise is, is the balance, is the, is the compromise that we can live with. So I'm assuming, and maybe you could just clarify for me, that the soft landscaping and hard landscaping is, you know, if you translate that to, to, you know, more accessible language outside of the planning department. What we're talking about really is, is what's acceptable in terms of parking in the front of your house and on what, you know, maybe the lawn and what's not acceptable. Is that, do you elaborate a bit on that?
Yeah. Through the chair to the mayor. Yes, that is the intent of the introducing the differentiator between soft landscaping and hard landscaping. Is that a minimum requirement for soft landscaping would be in the front yard to really tighten that up? If your by law isn't specific on the definition of landscaping, some people put pavers or that sort of thing that they then park on as well. So that was the intent. We've heard that pretty loud and clear from both council as well as the community that there are big concerns with parking on front lawns. And I think as far as your points about short-term rental accommodations as well. The zoning by law would work hand in hand and would be a tool that should work in conjunction with other tools that the city might have at their disposal in order to address concerns around noise, nuisance, parties, parking associated. And so I will also say with regard to parking, although in protected major transit station areas, the city doesn't have the ability to require minimum parking. Many developers will still provide parking due to market demand as well. Or there are private providers that may see opportunity for parking garage, that sort of thing associated with some of the other development that's coming in. So typically that's how these things balance themselves out as well.
Great. That's it for me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else on second round? I, I do want to ask if we do remove that sort of loophole of pavers as landscaping, so people pave their entire front lawn. Is, are we going to have to grandfather the ones that are already in that state?
To the chair, I would have to go back to my colleague Ian Graham, who I think has hopped off.
Okay, we can discuss offline.
As the guru, but we'll definitely look into that and be able to report back on that.
Thank you.
Oh, Steph.
I just wanted to respond to that question. So through you, Madam Chair, you are correct. If we were to introduce a new regulation or standard in the by law, then those properties would then become legal non-compliant.
Sorry, would become legal not, sorry, what does that mean?
Legal non-compliant, meaning that they are still legal because they existed based on the, the zoning by law that, that was in effect at the time. Now that we're introducing a new by law that introduces new standards, they no longer, they don't comply with the new standards.
But that doesn't really matter in terms of having it stay there.
So, correct. And so with introducing new standards, what that will do will prevent new instances of, you know, but we can't go back and, and change what's already there.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Chen, go ahead.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I'm glad that it's brought up. Funya parking is quite often a complaint I receive and it's a complaint difference, I understand. So I'm not going to touch on issues since a question had been raised and answered. The other one, I don't have the time in the first round is on aging in place. I'm glad to see that this is actually something to build in, into moving forward. Because let's face it, demographic speaking, population not only Richmond, we are aging, growing, whatever term is. So putting that aging in place is good, but it's a particular term that caught my attention. Is that about not only legally assisting aging in place uses, but existing non-conforming uses? So through you, Madam Chair, maybe similar to funya parking. Do we, the city, have an inventory or some idea what are the current non-conforming uses for aging in place? Through you, Madam Chair. Yes or no?
Through the chair, I would have to defer to staff as to whether the city has an inventory of, of non-conforming. I'm seeing no, not aware.
That's fine. And, and that caught my attention because presumably that you're talking of certain things that people might have done within legally or existing non-conforming use, but is relating to active living, hopefully independent living for seniors. So that, I just want to have a clear picture. But moving forward, we could have a different discussion on this. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Thank you. I think that's it for the questions. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? Thank you. That passes. Next we move on to 11.3. This is in regards to Cynthia. That's where I live. I'd like to comment and say I, I appreciate the residents coming. I'm, I am going to vote against this because this is what my, I represent the residents and I agree. We want to try to keep, it's exactly what we were just talking about, keeping the integrity and the look of the existing neighborhoods. That's one of the only places in Richmond Hill where you have big yards and lots of green space. And it's also a very wet area. And while I appreciate the delegate who said this isn't zoned as a floodplain. The rain we saw this last summer far exceeds anything we've seen previously in the 25 years I've lived there. So I do think we have to be much more careful about what we allow. And also Coon's Road is an extremely busy, busy spot. Those properties will be right up to a very, very busy intersection. Those properties will be right up to a very, very busy intersection. Um, so for the reasons of maintaining integrity, the changing landscape of the weather, the floodplain, all that, I, I won't be able to support this. Um, is there anyone else who'd like to speak? I move the motion, right? No, I don't. You go ahead.
Uh, to the chair, um, if you would like to move the motion, you would have to transfer the chair.
Oh, I will transfer the chair to, who's next in line? Councillor?
From the place.
Leave? It, it's really up to you, but.
Well, I don't want to move the motion, so I spoke too soon, I guess. Okay, who wants to move the ocean, motion? I'll transfer the chair to, to Joe.
Thank you.
Councillor.
Well, you don't need to transfer chairs. I, I happily move the motion, knowing,
Okay.
Knowing that that's your desire in the neighborhood. Um, and, um, you know, in consideration of, of the delegations that have come forward and, um, I, uh, do, I do disagree with the staff recommendation. So how would you, uh?
So I would like to speak.
Okay.
What I just said. So I agree, I cannot support this motion. Thank you.
Okay. Neither can I.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, to, to the chair, the councillor DePaula would be in line to be, to take over, to be the chair if you're going to.
Right, but he doesn't want to move it either. So.
Does not want to move the motion.
Who's the third person?
It would be councillor Chan.
Oh, he already moved the motion.
But yes, he's already, he's already moved the motion though. Councillor DePaula's already moved the motion that is in the staff recommendation. But you, you, so you, you, you can withdraw your, your move.
Yeah, I'd like to withdraw. That's not what I said. I didn't, I didn't support the recommendation.
So who's, who's going to take the, take the reins?
Can I make a suggestion? Uh, given, is councillor DePaulo, is he, would he be next in line as vice chair? Okay, so transfer the, the chair to councillor DePaulo and then councillor Davidson, you could move the motion, right? Uh, you can move whatever motion you would like.
I just am against this motion. I believe councillor DePaulo is also against the motion. So do we not need a chair that will field comments from the rest of council that, from someone who does want to move this motion?
Well, I think I can assume the chair and council can do what it wants. I've, I've made myself clear as how I feel.
We haven't had a mover of the motion.
Is anyone else willing to put this motion on the floor?
He withdrew his motion approval.
Okay, so, does anyone want to move?
We defer to you, I think.
Thank you. Uh, to the chair. So currently there is no motion on the floor. Uh, councillor DePaula has withdrawn his initial move of staff recommendation. So I think.
Who's the chair?
It would, well, it would still technically, I suppose, be councillor, uh, yourself, councillor Davidson, because you.
So now I ask who wants to move the motion? Who would like to move this motion?
Or a motion.
Or a motion, an alternative motion. It looks like we're all stymied here. What's, oh, Mayor West.
Okay, this is an uncomfortable position to be in, but, um, in, in order to have a conversation about this, we need to have a motion on the floor. And, uh, unless we want to defer this to council, which means that nobody gets to say anything until the council meeting. Um, so I would be happy to move a motion that's the staff recommendation. And I know that that's not, uh, that, you know, that's probably not the, the popular thing to do, but the concern that I have with moving the motion to deny this, this offer at the OLT is that the reality is we will have to go to the, the OLT, uh, and, and have the full hearing, which will end up costing, uh, the municipality some, you know, reasonably significant amount of money. But the other thing is too, because we have a staff report that's in favor of this, uh, recommended offer, does it not also in this case mean that we would have to also hire external legal and planning consultants in order to defend our position at the Ontario Land Tribunal? Because staff will not be able to defend that position because of, they will, they'll be compromised because of the staff report. Is that correct?
Uh, through you, um, Madam Chair, to, uh, Mayor West. Yes, that is correct. The staff recommendation is for support of the revised proposal before council today. And if council takes a contrary position, then obviously then staff would not be able to support that position.
Okay. Now, I mean, I don't have a crystal ball, but I have to assume that if staff has done the analysis and they've gone through the preliminary, um, work at the Ontario Land Tribunal, then we feel that the outcome of this, should it go all the way through to a decision at the Ontario Land Tribunal, that the outcome would be similar, if not worse, than what is being proposed here today. Is that, can you comment on that?
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, to Mayor West. Um, I cannot comment on what the OLT will, will come up with, but obviously we, we have, uh, our position is as it is before you and in, uh, as outlined in the staff report, we feel that the proposal is reasonable. It meets the requirements of the official plan and the zoning by law. And that would be the, the position that the, um, the applicant obviously would be taking forward to OLT with staff's concurrence.
Right, but it, but when in, in a situation like this, when staff brings forward a, um, a, a rec, a recommendation in a staff report like this, I mean, you, obviously staff doesn't feel we could do a lot better at the OLT if we went through the entire process. I mean, that we, i- is that not a fair statement?
Through you, Madam Chair, um, uh, that is not a consideration for staff. The, the consideration for staff really is, are there planning merits that are supportable that we can bring to council? And we feel that the proposal is supportable and that is the position that we're taking or recommending to council.
Okay, I, I, okay. I appreciate, I asked you a question you can't answer. I, I get that and I, I respect that. But I guess if I could, you know, translate that, at least in my mind, is what it means is that the position that we're in right now with the recommendation and with the offer that's on the table, it, it is, it does constitute what would be, would meet the bar to be good planning.
Through you, Madam Chair, uh, yes, in my professional opinion, I would concur with that.
Okay. And so if we decided to go to the Ontario Land Tribunal, we actually are going to have to defend against what would be considered in the, in, you know, for, to some degree in the planning community as good planning. And that's the problem is that if we, like, I understand what the, what the community feels like, and I have on many occasions, uh, fought the over-intensification of Cynthia Court, for goodness sake. I mean, it's, it's, you know, it's a, an area that has really big, beautiful lots, and I totally appreciate that. And I think that there are in, in almost all other cases except this one, I think that there's a very good case to be made that like, you know, some development could be allowed in that area, but not overdeveloped. You know, it's always two lots, not three, two lots, not three. And we've dealt with that a number of times. The problem with this, um, particular lot in relation to the rest of Cynthia is that right across the street are lots that are very, very similar to that. To the west, there are lots that are very, very similar to that. I just think that if we send this to the Ontario Land Tribunal, we're, we're, I don't think we have a very huge prospect of winning. I, I don't have a crystal ball, so I don't know that for a fact, no one does. But the Ontario Land Tribunal does not tend to be particularly siding on the favor of municipalities and situations like that. And I can say that for a fact, I've been here for enough years to know that. But on top of that, we're going to be, uh, having to, you know, spend a fair amount of money, more than normal because of the situation that we're in right now. And without a decent prospect of getting something better for the community, I'm not sure that this is, um, something we can do. Do I only have a minute left? But, um, I wanted just, I, I do hear what the residents are saying about flooding and safety. I absolutely need to know from staff that, that whatever engineering work needs to be done, on top of the fact that we've got open space designated at the back of this, which I think would probably help with flooding, that we will do everything before anything gets approved there to make sure that water is contained on that lot.
Through you, Madam Chair, um, subsequent to this process, should, should it be approved by council, uh, as recommended, uh, there will be a, not, a couple of applications that will be required, one of which is a consent to actually create the lots. So grading and drainage will be looked at as part of that process, but also there, through the building permit process, grading, uh, will also be looked at again. So the comments that have been made here and have been raised by the residents and yourselves will be taken into consideration and put forward as part of future consideration of those applications.
Okay. And the number of trees that are taken down is not great. I, I'm certainly not thrilled about that and, and lots of trees are going to have to be, um, uh, planted in response to that. I get that they're not going to be as big as the ones that are being taken down yet, but they will at some point. Um, but I want to make sure that we're doing everything that we can and anything further that we can to make sure that any of the trees buffering this property, particularly to the west, um, would be maintained so that there's a, you know, a reasonable amount of privacy as much as we possibly can. And that will be a part of the process as well. Is that correct?
Through you, Madam Chair, that is correct.
Okay, and in the five seconds I have left, what further analysis are we going to have to do to make sure of safety, uh, with the extra driveways?
Uh, through you, Madam Chair, um, again, through the subsequent applications, there will be a review that will take into account any, uh, parking, for example, with the zoning by law and, uh, any other impacts that our transportation staff may raise through that process. But there will be a review as part of the subsequent consent and the building permit applications, site alteration.
So this is far from the end of the process with regard to some of these concerns that residents have.
Uh, through, through you, Madam Chair, this process really is just to, uh, approve the actual rezoning of the site. We have to go through the further process of consent to create the lots and then through the building permit process itself.
Okay. It's up to council to do what they need to do with this, but I, I, I've made my comments. I, I, for the sake of the conversation that we need to have with this, um, I think I'll move the motion that's the staff recommendation and open it, open up the conversation from there.
Thank you, Regional Councillor Chan. Sorry, I'm sorry you can't.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and, uh, thank you, uh, Mayor West for bringing forward the motion. Uh, we, um, honest, I, I'm struggling with this. On one hand, I understand the intent of the, uh, of the owner and where we are at in terms of this is strictly, not strictly for council, it's a year or nay, it's actually another body, which may already make, uh, is an Ontario Land Tribunal. The issue for us at the committee and council next week is to, we support or not support the settlement being put forward. So that's where we are in. I do hear delegate concern, and let me ask a question clarified, uh, so that I have a better information before I cast my vote. Um, it is stated in the staff report that the applicant actually provide a revised submission. So we are talking about now asking council or committee to support or deny a revised application at the settlement table. Uh, I saw our commissioner nodding. I'm wondering to the extent our delegate here in the committee, uh, know or not know, is that the revised application proposal had been shared, uh, with other members, uh, of the community, other than apartment owner? Through you, Madam Chair. Because I think it makes a difference. It looks like they make a lot, quite a bit of changes since then.
Through you, Madam Chair, uh, there was no formal process involved because the application had been appealed to OLT. Uh, so we would have been heading there with, let's say, the original proposal. This, the applicant chose to submit a revised proposal to address some of the concerns that were raised through the public consultation and the public meeting. That revised proposal is what is in front of council today, and we are seeking your direction because there is a case management conference coming up and they're going to schedule an OLT hearing. So this revised proposal really addressed the issue of, uh, side yard setbacks, which were originally going to be, uh, reduced. Now they're complying with the bylaw. Same thing with the lot frontages, they're complying, uh, for the most part. Um, well, two of the lots don't comply completely, but there, you know, it's been a reduction, uh, from what I believe was originally asked for. But, um, the revised proposal in front of council right now is what you're being asked to look at.
Thank you. Uh, so would it be fair to say that, I don't want to make any assumption, presumption, whatever, uh, unless you're a party to the OLT hearing, that, uh, other party, including members of the committee, might not necessarily know about revisions as proposed that now in front of us? Is that true? Through you, Madam Chair, to Commissioner of Planning.
Uh, so the, the way that someone would be notified of that would, would be to have asked for notification of this hearing today, today's com- committee, the whole meeting. So if they were on the notification list, one of the residents, for example, they would have been notified of that today. But there, if, if, if I can understand, uh, correctly the question, there wouldn't have been another public process or consultation process to look at the revised proposal. It's what's in front of council today.
Thank you. So the reason I ask that, uh, because I'm, I'm trying to determine in my mind, what community who are opposed to, including a delegate, is that based on the initial application proposal that comes to council previously, or is it based on revised development appears to be, uh, I'm not happy with, you know, cutting the 45 trees being cut, but now they're saying they put in a new 47 trees. And, and already alluded to that, well, not, it was indicated, the south turn part will be open space to, uh, to take care of some of the potential flooding risk and so on and so on. So I'm not quite sure necessarily the members of the community there who are opposing it might have those more up-to-date information, uh, than the notification, oh yeah, there's a meeting here at committee or council next week. So that's where I'm trying to draw the difference. But thank you for your answer. Um, thank you, Madam Chair, for me to see clarification.
Thank you. Anyone else on first round? No. Mayor West, second round?
Okay, thank you. So in the staff report, and, and, sorry, I should have said this at the first round, but it, it caught my eye when I was reading the staff report on page five. There's a, a, a table there that talks about the lot one and two complying with everything except a minimum side yard setback, which is only out by about four feet. Can, now, I'm a little confused on this, and maybe I need to reread that part, but it, it is this, this is for lot one and two. What a, what's the, like, what are, is this relevant to all three lots? That it, so the point of this chart is it complies with, like, under the existing zoning bylaws with that, like, as of right for almost all of the different criteria? I mean, what's that, what's, what's not complying?
Uh, through the chair to Mayor West. So the compliance, uh, the side yard setback that you're referring to, uh, deals with only the lot that is actually at the corner.
Okay.
So it's a fl- a flankage lot. So what, what we did is we had to make sure that there was enough of a side yard setback to allow for a parking space.
Right.
So it's actually only applicable to the lot that applies, that is actually, has frontage on both Coon's and Cynthia Crescent.
Okay, so had this applicant come to us with this current proposal, not the original proposal, this staff report would have indicated that everything pretty much is complying or close to complying with the existing zoning that we have in this, in this neighborhood? On that lot, sorry?
Correct.
Okay. So that's the thing. So I mean, we're, we're going to go, like, if we go to the, I mean, as much as I understand the concern that the, the community has, and I have the same concern, I don't like seeing, uh, pieces like of the community changed like this. But the problem is, if we go to the, to the OLT, given this, you know, what's on the pa- on page five, I mean, we're going over four feet, uh, of, of one of the lots. I, I mean, I don't know. Okay, that, that's all my comments. I just wanted to make sure I understood that, which I, I think I did.
Okay, I think that's all for comments and questions. We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor? One, two, three, four? All those against? One, two, three? That motion carries. Next we movie, we're moving on to our last 11.5. That is the request for comments for the radio communication application, Westbeaver Creek Road. Do I have a mover? I don't see anybody moving. Uh, is there a way to discuss without having someone move it in, in the affirmative?
Uh, thank you to the chair. Um, it's, someone can move it to bring on the floor. I understand that councillor Shum has a motion that he would want to present to refer. That can just be done now.
Okay, so I can throw it to councillor Shu without him moving the motion on the floor?
I, I do have his motion ready, so we, we can have a motion.
We go to councillor Shu.
So, uh, that means I have to move the motion to, uh, no, no, because I want to do it at the end, after all the conversation that's done. Is it, is it okay? I've done most of motion now. Okay, uh, I want to move the motion to refer this report back to the staff. Uh, this is my motion. And, uh, can I speak more to? This is my motion. And can I speak more to support my motion?
My understanding is you have the floor for five minutes. The clerk is about to put the motion before council. So over to you. Explain your motion.
Okay. Thank you all the neighbors who, who came to the chambers, and also by virtue this morning to voice your concern about the cell tower being too close to the residential area. And I've been in discussion with men of you for over a year. And I told men of you that unfortunately, health issue is not our jurisdiction. And what we are here to, to discuss is all about the land use planning and building safety. But at the same time, on the other hand, as some of you may know, I had an internal meeting with mayor and, and the relevant planning staff on this topic on March 12. And during that meeting, I asked if 120 West Beaver Creek Road is the only option to build a cell tower there. And I asked if this, if it's possible to relocate to the east side of the proposed site. And perhaps 121 West Beaver Creek, or even farther, farther away, because at the opposite side, there's no residential area there. There's nobody living there. And, but I'm so disappointed today, because according to the staff report, there's nothing's changed. And my suggestion and advice must be ignored. So I, I understand if the cell tower moved farther away from the residential area, the signal would become weakened. But now you see, the nearby residents are more concerned about their well-being rather than the signal stability. So, and one of the points the delegates brought up today was the lack of consultation. I definitely support this concern. According to the Planning Act, the area affected by the tower should be four times its height, which means 108 meters radius. But the staff report only concern is only 100 meters radius for the last year public, public consultation. So that's why I've been hearing from some of the neighbors who feel they were not consulted. That's the point, because one, there's a difference between 100 meters radius and 108 meters radius. There's a difference. We have to guarantee all the affected residents are being consulted. That's very important. And, and another point worth discussing is the liability. One of the delegates raised the issue of liability. I just want to clarify if any nearby, any nearby neighbors end up getting sick, physically or mentally, because of the tower's short distance, and there's proven evidence. Does the city have any liability in that case? I'm just wondering to, to figure out this. Through the chair.
Through you, Madam Chair. The, the cell tower location and its, I guess, licensing, if I can put it that way, it's all regulated through the federal government. The city is not involved in the safety aspect of it, as the counselor has already noted. And we certainly are not involved in any liability matters or have jurisdiction in that regard. That's really all I can provide. It, it's really, the, the whole approval process is, is done through the municipality to ensure consultation. But at the end of the day, all comments, all decisions, everything else are taken forward to the federal government, and they deal with those specific matters.
Okay, understood. My other point is, even though it's located in the loading area of the commercial units, it's still facing the backyards of residential homes. So just imagine trying to relax in your backyard, only to have a seven, 27 meter tall cell tower right in your line of sight, just 108 meters away, and this bound to make anyone feel uneasy and mentally feel uncomfortable. And I understand the council is focused on the land use planning and building safety, but as elected official, as, and, as elected officials, we should also think about why we are here. It's not just about following the rules and regulation on book to approve items. It's also about looking out for our neighbors and making sure they feel safe and comfortable living in our city. There's a well-being. There's a well-being is also what we are concerned about, and that's why we are here. Not just following the rules and regulation only. So please don't put hard times on the neighbors. I do believe 120 West Beaver Creek Road is not the only location we can consider. There's so many choices to balance the well-being of the, of the residents and also the signal stability. So I do hope all my council colleagues to reconsider and think twice to balance the well-being of the residents and also, and also the planning land use. Because why we are here is to serve the community, but not put the hard times on the neighbors. And I just ask for my council colleagues to support this motion to refer it back to the staff to reconsider if, if there's any potential location we can explore to have any other choice. That's my comments, through Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Mayor West.
Okay, thank you. All right, I, I'm fine with this approach, and I appreciate Counselor Shu doing this. Because I think one of the things that, I, I really don't like cell towers when they come to council. It drives me nuts. It doesn't happen very often, but we do get them. And, and I think that, from our perspective, at least my perspective as an elected official, you know, we get community input for sure. And, but the problem is that we don't have really the ultimate power to do a whole lot when it comes to approval of cell towers, as was alluded to. I had a bunch of questions that I wanted to ask about the specifics of that, but I think with this staff report that you're asking for, I would hope that that would be cell tower 101 for municipalities would be part of the body of this, of this staff report. And, and what we can do, what we really don't have jurisdiction to do, and what the implications of all this. And, and that's the advice that I think it's totally fair that we would be looking for as council before we make a decision. So I thank you, Counselor Shu, for making sure that we all understand exactly that. I, I will say that the community has done a good job in advocating for this. I mean, there's certainly been a lot of, you know, work that's been done and, and bringing the community together. I guess the good part about this is the community probably knows their neighbors much better than they did before all this happened, if there's any silver lining to this. But I, I will say that, you know, the, I, I agree with the fact that we don't have the science around cell tower health effects is, is not conclusive. I mean, I know we heard from somebody today, but I've heard both sides of this story. And frankly, even if I understood the real answer, it's still, you know, we, that's not within our jurisdiction to be caught, to be making decisions based on the health effects. So anyway, I think this is fine. Just a question to the planning commissioner. It says here a future meeting, and I don't think we need to put a date on this specifically, but I can't imagine that this would take very long for you to gather the information and bring it back to council.
Through you, Madam Chair. I'm in council's hands on that, if they want, if you wish to put a date forward. But obviously, we would have to circle back with the proponent, put council's comments to them. I'm sure they're listening to this discussion anyway. And we would have to prepare a staff report within the timelines to get it back to council.
Okay, well, would it be reasonable, we don't need to put it in the motion, but would it be reasonable to target the following council meeting after the one coming up next week?
Through you, Madam Chair. That would be a really quick turnaround for staff.
Okay.
I'd like to give them a bit more time to actually put the, the things that you want in the staff report so that you can have a healthy discussion and consideration of the issues.
Okay, fair enough. I, I mean, I'm not, I, I don't think we need to say it. I, I appreciate this gives staff the flexibility to work it into their work plan, because, you know, this is, you know, something that needs to be done, and it will take some staff resources to do it, which is fine. But I think we need to work that into the timeline. So anyway, that's all I've got to say. I'll be happy to support the, the referral.
Thank you. I'm just gonna talk to the clerk here. So we need to take a break, but we are so close to the end, and people have been waiting so long. Is it acceptable to take? Can we press on, or can we, we can press on? Okay, thank you. Next, we have Counselor Tree.
Thank you so much. So I think the purpose of all these service tower is to help people, right? As I remember, I read their, or listened to their explanation from Rogers. So the purpose of this area is because short of the coverage. That's the purpose. Now, what's the purpose of soft coverage? I think a service is provided by Rogers, trying to give more convenience for connections for residents. But end of the day, if 90% of residents don't like this position, and what is the benefits to provide? But services which they don't like at all, right? Make a balance of the services they like, make the balance of the service they're trying to provide. I think we, we got our answer already. The residents there does not like or don't like that services, pure, period. In case of the coverage, I think the location as well, solution, right? You can put anything you want. If you want to put the same towers, type of tower, cover majority area, yeah, that's your suggestions, but it does not work or is work. But depends on the, the benefits. I think we have to talk with back to the Rogers, those solution architect, to consider what is the benefits? What is the proposal? Does that meet really the people's requirement? Or there's only one solution. You have to build out 26, 27 meters high towers there. Or you can distribute the tower to a different numerous locations. Make a balance of your resources and your costs, and also think about people's living there. So I think the solution is not only one. You must need to build up a 25 or 26 towers. There might be alternate solutions, there might be alternative locations as well. So let's put this back to Rogers. Let them think about it, reconsider the solution. Thank you. That's my thought.
Thank you. Next, we have Regional Counselor Chan.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, my heart goes to the community being affected, having the privilege of present that area for 16 years. I know it well. There are ongoing battles from theoretically, and I thank you, Counselor Shu, for moving this. I do understand that I'm prepared to support the motion. Having said that, through Madam Chair, I would also like there may be some clarification from Commissioner Planning, maybe. Because at the end of the day, it's not the city who actually initiate to have this tower, it's Rogers. So would it not be the situation in this case that is up to Rogers, whether in fact, no matter how much time, we would allow this to come back? Roger would have to say yes or nay. Or more importantly, I also noted there's a dispute resolution process under the protocol. Would that potentially could be trigger Rogers to initiate a dispute resolution, taking that as a no answer from this committee or council? Through you, Madam Chair.
Through you, Madam Chair. The counselor is correct. Should there be a non-concurrence vote by council, then it could go to a dispute resolution through, through the federal government who would actually approve this. They're the approval authority, not council in the end.
Yes, thank you for pointing out again, because actually, there's a Supreme Court of Canada case in 2016. Make it very clear with all nine justices. Well, it's not written to the motion, I'm not referring to it. For those who are interested, we can look at that. But that particular one also involved Roger, and Roger won it. The reason I brought that up is that it's within the protocol. I believe one of the delegate and Counselor Shu make reference. I think Mr. Jack Thai, he mentioned about, or raised question about the protocol hasn't been strictly followed. I remember very clearly, actually, the Federation can municipalities have actually in, well, almost the last decade now, have worked with municipalities, actually Canadian Wireless Association, which meaning, including Rogers, all these wireless provider, to come up with this comprehensive protocol for all municipalities in Canada to follow. Because, you know, this is really not an issue that, council generally speaking, would like to deal with with committee opposition, and that we're stuck. We are not a body approved or not approved. So I think the referral would give opportunity for staff review, have the protocol fully follow up and comply with. And I have fortune to sit at the SCM, the Wonder Committee this year, so perhaps I will also bring it up at the Federation again, municipalities who revisit, perhaps, that John's protocol is still need to be updated. That was, I think, 2015, 2016. So I support the motion, but I think we need to have a really good conversation with Rogers and other wireless operator. The last thing I would share, years ago, there was supposed another one in Bayview in 16. It's not there, right at the station of the gas station. And it, at that time, have the active support of the local Member Parliament, who helps at the time with the layman myself, go all the way to the industry minister office. So it's not in the motion, but perhaps community can think of approaching the local Member Parliament to get his assistance upon this one, because it's a federal jurisdiction. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We have a motion on the floor. I don't see any more speakers. All those in favor? That's unanimous. That carries. I think that wraps up today's business. May I have a mover to adjourn? Mayor West, all those in favor?